Hello.
Hello there. Who's on?
Mike Sullivan.
Can you hear him okay?
Hey, Mike, are you?
Are you fine? Where's that one guy, Commissioner Beckstead?
Not on yet.
I haven't heard of him recently.
All right, I'm sure he'll get on and I.
Devin, can you move that?
I see Commissioner Glojean, can you hear me? All right.
Commissioner Totacini, can you hear us?
Oh, yes, now I can.
All right. So that's four of us.
Well, there's more across the bottom.
Well, I know that, I mean, from the commission.
He has to move.
All I'm waiting for is.
John may be there, maybe not be there.
Well, he's at his office.
I just sent him a text. He said he's not on yet. Can you be? I wonder if. It's drying right now.
Somebody's breathing. Just saying, our boxes across the bottom have an arrow to move to see who else is on the page. Who else?
You see, John?
I just logged on.
There he is. Is that that one guy, John Beckstead?
That's me.
Okay, all right. Well, then, we are going to, I'm going to ask everyone to stand and call the meeting order. And I have a, one of the people that's on the agenda is my dentist, and his name is James Cole. Mr. Cole, if you would step up to the microphone and if you would lead us in the invocation. All right. I like to put him on the spot. He hurt my tooth.
Father, thank you for today. We pray for our decisions and our leaders and what's happening in our country throughout the world. Pray for relief. We pray for wisdom and discernment, and we pray for peace. Father, thank you that we can gather still, video or in person, albeit with different protocols. But thank you for still being in charge, still still know what's going on, still moving, and thankful for that, even though we don't understand what's going on. Thank you for this time, and thank you for blessing us. It's in Christ's name we pray.
Amen. Thank you. All right. I pledge allegiance and suitorcy to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. All right. Thank you, Mr. Cole, for letting me surprise you like that. Truly a great dentist and a great American and a great godly guy. Appreciate you doing that. Let me start off by saying that our hearts are heavy. A commissioner that we previously served with passed away this morning, and Margaret McDaniel and her family are grieving. We grieve with them. We'll be praying for Margaret's family. Judge Gary McDaniel is her spouse, and I know he's going to take some time off the bench for a while. But we'll be praying for the family, and we ask other people to be praying for the family also. All right. With that, we are now in the regular meeting. Mister manager, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Mister Chairman and Commissioners, no changes to the agenda.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? So moved.
Second.
All right, second by Beckstead, motion by Mister Commissioner Crowley. I knew that was his name. Any discussion? All right, those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. I will assume then, so we don't have to have a roll call, that everyone, it was unanimous approval unless otherwise indicated. Now. All right, so next is the consent agenda. If you will look at the consent agenda, number one is consideration of approval of financial check registers for March 2020. Two is consideration of approval for financial check registers for March 2020. Next is consideration of bid renewal 18-19-18 price agreement for the purchase of traffic marking paint from Allstate's Coating Company in Glade Water, Texas. Number four is consideration of bid renewal 18-19-14 the price agreement for the purchase of asphalt emulsions and associated products to Holly Frontier Refining Marketing LLC Albuquerque, New Mexico. Number five is consideration of amendment to employee medical benefit plan due to COVID-19. And six, consideration of City of Aztec and City of Farmington fiscal year 2021 animal shelter services rate. Does anyone have any questions or want to take any of those off of the consent agenda? If not, Commissioner Crowley, may I have a motion to approve the consent?
No move.
Mister, second.
Don't move.
All right, it was a second by Commissioner Totacini and a motion by Crowley. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? It appears there was none, and I'm going to assume that it was unanimous unless someone speaks up.
I'm not hearing Commissioner. But I think that's.
Okay. Let's see here. That gets us to new business. And item number one is consideration of resolution number 19-2056 proclaiming the month of April as National County Government Month. Mister Devin Neely, PR Manager, San Juan County.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you so much for your time today. Before his proclamation declaring April as county government month, reminding our constituents that counties matter. I think in this time, we have all seen the importance of the county government in planning, preparing, responding to the coronavirus crisis in our area. We've seen the leadership of our county, the San Juan County Office of Emergency Management and others in our organization, and we feel that it is valuable to go in line with more than 3,000 other counties around our bigger country which are proclaiming April as county's month. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Make the motion to approve. Commissioner Crowley has made a motion to approve. May I have a second?
So moved.
All right, it sounded like it was a second by Commissioner Sullivan. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Please by, they know. Appears that it was a unanimous vote unless any objection. All right, that gets to item number two, and that is the consideration of resolution number 19-20-57 proclaiming the month of May 2020 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Gretchen Potter, Chair Mental Health Task Force, and Greg Allen, and it looks like you both are there by Zoom. Who would like to speak?
Go ahead, Gretchen.
All right, Gretchen.
Mister Chairman and Commissioners, as Chair of the Mental Health Task Group, I would like to present this proclamation declaring May 2020 as Mental Health Awareness Month, especially during this time with the COVID and being in isolation. Many individuals are suffering with mental illness and awareness. I just think we should bring light to it, especially in our county.
Gretchen and I agree. I think it was about a year ago we had, we had a banquet honoring this, but due to this. Can you hear you again? All right, when we left off, Greg, you were speaking.
Yes, sir. So, thank you, Mister Chairman and Commission. We're talking about our masquerade ball that was in May of last year.
Right.
Planned on our second annual, which would be, would have been scheduled for this Friday, which was the only date that we could get to host it at the Civic Center. But because of the stay-at-home orders, obviously, we had to postpone that. Hopefully, we can maybe do this, our second annual sometime in July or August are the dates that we're looking at. And the. Is really, can you still hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so the goal behind the ball is for people who are in our mental health community, and a lot of them that attended last year were from treatment. We want them to experience a nice evening and maybe something that they may have missed when they were younger, like a prom or something like that. Part of the event is to kind of escape that nation or isolation that they already experienced, experiencing in, do something fun with other community members here.
I agree. All right, is there a motion from anyone on item number two? Moved.
Second, John Beckstead.
All right, it's been a motion by Commissioner Crowley, second by Commissioner Beckstead. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Say oppose, say no. It appears that it was a unanimous vote. If not, please stop. All right, thank you. Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Gretchen.
Thank you, sir, and we certainly appreciate the commission's support of this particular cause. Go ahead, Gretchen.
Well, and I just wanted to make note that the Mental Health Task Group is still meeting on a regular basis via Zoom meeting, and we have a list on the San Juan Safe Communities website with links to any mental health services that anyone is in need of.
All right. All right, thank you. We'll go on to item number three, which is consideration of approval of funding request for New Mexico Mission of Mercy event in September of 2021 from HCAP funds. Both Lisa Lear will speak, and I think Dr. James Cole. Is anyone else here?
I'm here virtually.
Oh, okay. All right, Jennifer Thompson, hello. James?
And I'm Trish Rule.
Okay. James, the camera adds like 20 pounds to you. What, you're not on camera? Sorry, never mind. My bad. Lisa, go ahead.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, members of the commission. We have before you this afternoon a consideration of approval of funding request for the New Mexico Mission of Mercy in San Juan County in September 2021. In September 2013, San Juan County partnered with the New Mexico Dental Foundation for the first Mission of Mercy in San Juan County. It was held at McGee Park. It was very successful. The San Juan County HCAP Fund provided $100,000 in direct financial support. And in addition, in-kind support for the use of the McGee Park facility. A lot of staff came forward, lots of volunteers. It was reported in 2013, the event involved 1,300 volunteers, provided $586,000 of dental treatment to 952 low-income and/or uninsured members of the San Juan County community. So the second New Mexico Mission of Mercy in San Juan County will be held in September 2021, and Dr. Cole is here to present the funding request. So just to let you know, the event is a, provides dental services. The 2021 event will consist of 45 chair dental clinic. The services are provided by volunteer dentists and other medical personnel, including local dentists, and they expect to provide more than $700,000 of dental care. And I'm going to turn the floor over to Dr. Cole for additional information.
Thank you, Lisa. Mister Chairman, distinguished commissioners, thank you for your time today. I had a wonderful video that would have laid this out, but you get me instead, so I apologize. We're not able to make that happen. My name is James Cole. For those of you that don't know me, I've been a dentist here in Farmington for 30 years, or I'm in my 30th year, so I'm old. Maybe not as old as Mister Ford Urban.
Mister Stride, schoolmate.
I am the immediate past president of the New Mexico Dental Association Foundation, which is the benevolent arm of the New Mexico Dental Association. And I served as president for seven years and served on the board for a total of 11 years. I have served at every Mission of Mercy since the beginning, except for the very first one, I was in Peru. So I have extensive experience with missions domestically and internationally. I have gone to Peru nine times over the last few years in the Amazon region and the rainforests and the Amazon River and its tributaries. I've been to Mexico four times in various locations. And I've also served as the dentist for the Axis Program or the Alternative Sentencing Division for the past 11 and a half years, serving probably close to 700, 750 ladies that have gone through that program. I also have with me today, joining by video, is Dr. Jennifer Thompson, who is the current president of the New Mexico Dental Association. And she has served at every mom event in New Mexico from settle to tear down. So with her and joining us too is Trish Rule, who is the mom program administrator through the New Mexico Dental Association Foundation. That's a lot. Those two ladies, you can take over the world. They work like crazy and they love what they do. So it's a, it's a great team with them and those at the foundation. And now is when I'd like to have shown the video, but we don't have that. So I'm, you kind of know who we are and what we're about. 2013 was a very, very successful event. Hopefully, if the rain will stay away for 2021. If you were involved in the 2013 event, the building almost washed away at McGee Park. We showed it that first morning, and there was water everywhere. The engineers out there thought that maybe the building was going to wash away that evening. They opened the doors to kind of take the pressure off, and we had a room full of water that we promptly cleaned up and made some, some rapid changes. And due to the flexibility and the tenacity of the leadership, we were able to pull that off. So we're hoping that the 2021 event will not have that lovely little attachment to it. Let me talk about the why, you know, why we. It'd be different for each of us, but personally, I do it because I like connection. These people that we see are our neighbors and are maybe our coworkers that are in need. And we provide a way to try to alleviate pain and take away disease. It's, it's just the, the opportunity to be able to put your arm around somebody and tell them it's going to be okay, to get them out of pain and suffering, to take a tooth out, perhaps to change their smile. If you don't have teeth, it's hard to get a job as an employer that has a, has his own business. I mean, it's hard to hire people that don't have teeth. I mean, they can't function, they can't smile. So those are kind of the whys that we do. We just, we want to be able to serve. We've all drank the Kool-Aid over the years, and we are totally committed to doing it. I know that you guys are really busy today, and I don't want to take a whole lot of time, but I wanted to leave time open for questions. I do have a PowerPoint if, if that would be helpful in describing some more numbers and stats. We could certainly put that up. It's very quick. But I wanted to leave time at the very end for you guys to ask us questions and for Dr. Thompson and Trish Rule to answer anything.
Dr. Cole, I know you were involved in 2013, and the, what we heard, the feedback was just incredible how you changed people's lives. From, like you said, from taking them out of pain, giving them a smile, just making them feel more comfortable. And I'm glad that you, and you're asking, you're asking for the use of McGee Park and in addition, sending $5,000 for my HCAP funds, and I'm sure this will, will be unanimous. May I have a motion from somebody?
Mister Chair, this is Miss Totacini, Commissioner Totacini. I'd like to make a motion because I volunteered the first time it occurred at McGee Park, and I was very, very impressed with the donation of services to the people who need it. So I commend you.
A second, and it's been seconded. Motion was made by Commissioner Totacini. It was seconded by Commissioner Crowley. All right, is there any other discussion? There being none, those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? There's none. It appears that the vote was unanimous, and unless I hear otherwise, it will show as unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. You know, if I look that way. Okay. All right, next is item number two of new business, which is consideration of notices of intent to adopt ordinances, numbers 108, 109, 110, 111, 112, and meaning the dedication of gross receipts taxes in ordinances 24, 25, 45, 16, 62. Mister.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, members of the commission. As you may recall, over the last two years, the legislature has worked to de earmark various local gross receipts taxes. They made an effort two years ago. The effort was imperfect, and so we didn't do anything until after they fixed it during this last session. We're doing this because very soon we'll not get separate reporting from the state as to any of our increments. We're going to get a lump sum for these earmarked increments, except that in 108, we're still allowed to retain one-half of 1/8 for indigent health care. All of the rest of the increments, their dedication goes away. Certainly, you as the commission can ask that money coming from those particular taxes be dedicate, not dedicated, be allocated back. be dedicate, not dedicated, be allocated back annually during the budget years to help out each of those. So, basically, the ones we're working with, 108 is the health care and it'll go from an 8 to a 16. 109 is the environmental, it will just go to general fund. 110 is the fire tax, it will go to general fund. 111 is the juvenile, it will go to general fund. And 112 is the ADC increment, which has been done. It will give the commission more flexibility to move money where it needs to be if this has, meets with your approval. All we're asking today is that you authorize us to publish notices of intent to adopt and we'll place it on the May 19 meeting. Perhaps by May 19, we can all be in the same room together and it'll be easier to discuss. Be happy to try to answer any questions if you need me to.
Yes, Mr. Eck, this is not raise taxes, it just changes where they're going.
Just changes where they're going. Everything is, stays exactly the same.
Any questions for Mr. Eckles? Yes, Commissioner Crowley.
Ordinance 108 allows for half of it to be unrestricted. Is that correct? The other half still is dedicated to the H cap.
Correct. Any other questions?
No.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Beckstad? All right, it didn't appear there was any questions. Mr. Crowley, may I have a motion?
Move to approve a notice of intent for these ordinances, number 108, 109, 110, 111, 112.
All right, is there a second?
I would second that.
All right, there was a motion by Commissioner Crowley and a second by Commissioner Beckstad. Any other discussion? All right, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It appears there were no no's and it is in a unanimous vote. And I will assume is unanimous unless I hear otherwise. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that gets us to item number five, which is the consideration of request to authorize the county manager to award bid 19-20-05 La Plata Fire Station number two, addition renovation bid 19-20-14, excuse me, construction of Valley Fire Station number three, and bid 19-20-15 Sullivan Road Fire Station District number nine renovations.
Good afternoon.
Diana Chapman, how are you doing today?
I'm good today. How are you doing?
Good.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, I'm here to request the authorization of the county manager to award bid 19-20-05 La Plata Fire Station number two addition renovation, bid 19-20-14 Construction Valley Fire Station number three, and bid 19-20-15 Sullivan Road Fire Station District number nine renovations. Purchasing offices, we opened the bid 19-20-14 Construction of Valley Fire Station number three on April 16, and bid number 19-20-15 Sullivan Road Fire Station on April 15. And we have scheduled to open bid 19-20-05 La Plata Fire Station number two addition renovation on April the 30th, 2020. Because these projects are funded through state grant funding, it'll be critical to award the bids in a timely manner in order to meet the grant deadlines. Our contracts must be in place and the funds encumbered by May the 15th, 2020. So, we request that the county commission authorize the county manager to award these bids in order to meet these deadlines.
This is Stark, county manager. It's my understanding that if we don't do this, they're subject to be clawed back by the state considering the budget problem. Is that right?
Mr. Chairman, not for this fiscal year, these funds will be safe. But we do need to meet the grant deadlines of actually having the funds encumbered by May 15. So, that's the, the driving force here is the May 15 deadline. It was already in place by the state with these, receipt of these funds.
Any questions? No questions. Ms. Chapman, may I have a motion? Mr. Crowley?
Allow us the county manager to award bid 19-20-05 La Plata Fire Station number two addition renovation and bid 19-20-14 Construction of Valley Fire Station number three and bid 19-20-15 Sullivan Road Fire Station District number nine renovations.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sullivan. Is there any, any discussion? There being none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No. It appears there were no objections and we showed that it was, the vote was unanimous unless otherwise indicated. Thank you. Report from county manager.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. We have quite a few reports for you tonight. But as I've done the last couple of meetings, I'd like to first start off by having our emergency manager, Mike Messis, come up to share with you the recent statistics from the last meeting relative to the COVID-19 crisis, as well as our response efforts into the community. I'll have Mike start off with his presentation. It's a very similar one that he gives to our, our EOC, our Emergency Operations Center briefing to all of our stakeholders in the community. And then I'll go ahead and fill in any gaps relative to items that he may not have covered. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Okay, thank you, county manager. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission and members at home. I'm here to share some light on COVID-19 as it related to San Juan County. Some statistics that we reported at the Emergency Operations Center today is currently, prior to this afternoon's numbers, we had 1,971 positives in San Juan, or in the state of New Mexico, 58 deaths. Last week at this time, just to show you a difference, we had 1,300 positive cases and only 31 deaths. So, a big difference in just a week. Going to San Juan County, we had 293 positives, 17 deaths this week. Last week relatively, 173 positives and only seven deaths. So, as you can see, the numbers are rising. We still have a, a spread going on in this Four Corners area in New Mexico. And just today, we were notified this afternoon about 3:30, 21 new positives here in San Juan County. No deaths today. So, that brings us to a total of 314 positives in San Juan County, with 17 of those being decedents. The recent uptick is in our nursing homes that we've been reported by the Department of Health. We are monitoring that situation, quite frankly. The big uptick was 45 more in McKinley County today to bring them up to 460. They're second in the state right now, they're the hotbed. Bernadaleo County is closely ahead, they're barely at 580. So, you can see how McKinley County, which was probably fourth or fifth in the state just a few weeks ago, how they rapidly increased. Our missions at the Emergency Operations Center, of course, are working with our stake and our community partners, our agencies. We're working on PPE, protective equipment for those agencies and, and the hospital. We did take receipt of a Morg trailer today from the Department of Health. It's parked at McGee Park and it's on standby, 60-person capacity if we need it. So, we hope we don't because we have another 20-person capacity trailer at San Juan Regional. They wanted to park it in this area just so that we would have capacity if needed. Now, kind of, we hope that we don't. Something I want to bring to the commission's attention is sjrmc.net is a place that the commissioners can go to to see the status, daily numbers for capacity at the hospital. That's their census, COVID positives and people that are on ventilators. They have all that information that the community might be asking you, where do I get this information? It's on that website daily. Something that came to light this afternoon, just about an hour ago, the Department of Health wants to do community testing. The National Guard wants to come up and do that on the 26th and 27th of April. And I've told them that McGee Park would be a place that Emergency Management Agency would be able to host that. It'll be a drive-through clinic. Anybody in the community can come and get tested for free and the National Guard will be sponsoring that. And lastly, excuse me, we're working to provide a homeless shelter in the city of Farmington. Right now, we don't have a place for our homeless population. We are using the sobering center, but we don't want a community spread within that sobering center. So, we want an additional place to put COVID positives so that we don't have a spread like McKinley County has. So, we're working with the City of Farmington Chief Burke and I am working with the Department of Health to try to make that community fruition. We will be using some emergency management cots, blankets and pillows. And McGee Park will be supplying some curtains for that shelter as well. With that, stamp for any questions and I'll defer to county manager Stark.
Just to add a couple items to Mike's presentation. We did release information last, last week that we had two sheriff's deputies and two volunteer firefighters who were exposed to a COVID-positive patient. Happy to report that all four of those individuals have had testing and they came back negative. So, that's good for the community to know. As you know, we continue to try to reduce populations without compromising public safety at our detention facilities. We, we operate three of those, as you know. Our population today at the adult detention center is down to 277. This is down from 445 or so about a month ago. Juvenile, we're at 18 and in alternative sentencing, we're at 21. And so, to date, we've had no positive cases with employees or detainees at our three detention centers. So, that's a positive news as well. Just a couple other points that are non-COVID-related. There's been some questions related to, to the census and whether or not folks have been able to... Okay, sorry. This relates to our, our response efforts and, and citizen responses. And I just want to know, just let the commission know that, that the update leave, was what the census refers to it as, we're at 48% in San Juan County. And, and that relates to the number of folks who received an invitation to the census to respond. Those that live on the Navajo Nation or have P O boxes did not receive an invitation to respond like you may have in the mail that had your personal identification number. And that's why it, it appears that we have a very low response rate. 48% of our folks that live in our county did have not received that form by design. Those individuals were, starting in March, prior to COVID, were going to be contacted individually by a Census Bureau employee and hand-delivered an invitation to respond with a census form. Those operations have been halted and will not resume until mid-January. And of course, that's a moving target as well right now. So, I just want to make you aware that the census operations have been halted, that we have a large number of folks who have not received a census form and an invitation to respond. They're being asked to not go on and self-report because it, it will throw off numbers with the Census Bureau if they do so. Those individuals are being asked to hold off, wait until June, mid-June to receive their invitation and respond at that time. And dates have been extended out to, for responses, out to October 31st. And more than likely, there'll be an extension of the delivery of census data to the president, which was supposed to be in December, potentially a move of that date until April of next year, which then cascading has the effect of redistricting that will have to be done, et cetera. So, I want to make you aware of that. Tomorrow at 9:30, the PRC is meeting and will be considering replacement, replacement power matter, specifically hearing, the hearing examiner's presentation. Initial report on that is, it's recommending that P and M move forward with replacement power outside of San Juan County's boundaries, 50 megawatts in Rio Arriba, 350 megawatts in McKinley County. I would sure hope that, that our past year of advocating and making folks aware of the fact that San Juan County, specifically the Central Consolidated School District, are losing direct jobs, tax dollars, those, those replacement power resources need to be placed here in San Juan County. And I know you all agree with that position collectively. So, and then last but not least, COVID-19 changes a lot in, in how we send people off, those that pass, those that retire. Unfortunately, Tom Havel has been a public servant for 20 years here in San Juan County, leading the, the charge at the Adult Detention Center. This is, like I said, mentioned 20th of the year here. 40 years of public service, both his military career and I'm the state police. He'll be retiring April 30th. And certainly want to thank Tom for his service. I want to wish him all the best in retirement. He certainly earned it. He's spent a lot of hours in at the Adult Detention Center over our years here. I'm also happy though with, with the fact that we, from a succession planning standpoint, as you know, we work very hard to make certain we're bringing forth the next generation of leaders. And I'll be promoting, effective May 1st, Daniel Webb to the position of Adult Detention Center Administrator. We've changed that title a little bit from warden to administrator. Daniel brings with him 15 years of experience at the Sheriff's Office. He's the rank of lieutenant there. Of course, he has eight years as deputy warden, which that position will change as well, at the Adult Detention Center. So, he's been, he's been interviewing for the job for the last eight years and has certainly proven to myself and others in the community that he's, he's ready, the right man for the job to, to handle the responsibility associated with the Adult Detention Center. There's a lot of responsibility that comes with that facility. So, excited for Daniel and looking forward to him in that position. And just last for me, I just want to continue thanks to our executive leadership team. You see the folks that are presenting here, the folks that are back removed from this room, that continue to serve along with our dedicated team of employees to serve our citizens during this time. I'm truly humbled by the sacrifice and their service. They, they've been here for the citizens and will continue to be here for the citizens. And so, I'm just, just want to say thank you to them and their efforts during this time. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Aye on the COVID.
I also wanted to thank Mike and his hard work. He does not get days off these days. Commission level, we do see situation reports on a daily basis. I think yesterday was 31, I think today is 32 or most of that. But outlines part of the process goes on to make sure that we're covered and have thought of what needs to happen, that we have made allowances, made requests. And our county has done a marvelous job.
Thank you. All right. All right, now we're at reports from elected officials and department heads. I'm going to ask the deputy chief from the, under sheriff. Deputy chief, you know, very similar.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I just want to give you guys a case update as well as our county manager. As you guys are well aware, in mid-January, we had a kidnapping in the area. A young lady by the name of Sasha Kraus was reported missing from that community up on Crouch Mesa. Roughly a month later, her body was discovered outside Flagstaff in Coconino County. Our detectives have continued to work with the Coconino County detectives. And you're, just recently, based off information gleaned in both jurisdictions, were able to develop a suspect. Based on that information, Coconino County was able to get a homicide warrant for him. An individual who lives in Phoenix, Arizona, 22-year-old male. And today detectives from both jurisdictions traveled down and arrested him and served in a research warrants. Given the nature of what needs to be done in the investigation, we're not able to disclose many details, but I did want to update you guys on that.
Yeah, that's great. You're telling us that an arrest was made.
The homicide, yes.
The homicide. Wow, thank you. All right, other reports from the elected officials and department heads. I believe I see Ms. Shelby walking up. She hasn't had to punch anybody lately.
I was going to say, shall I state my name so you don't punch me in the nose?
Yes.
So, I would just like to give you all an update regarding our upcoming 2020 primary election. I know you all are following kind of, you know, through the Supreme Court and everything where we're at now. First and foremost, as I go through this, the health and wellness of our staff, our poll workers and the vote... our poll workers and the voters are going to be our top priority. We are strongly encouraging voters of San Juan County to vote absentee during this election. Starting Monday, April 27th, absentee applications will be mailed out to all eligible voters in the county. And when I say eligible, you have to be registered either Democratic, Libertarian or Republican in order to vote in a primary election. Early voting will start on May 5th in my office. We will be open 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM, Monday through Friday, until Friday, I'm sorry, until Saturday, May 16th. At that time, the additional four alternate sites in the county will be open. So those are Bloomfield Cultural Center, Farmington Museum at Gateway Park, Ship Rock Fire Station and Newcombe Fire Station. All of those sites will be staffed with only four poll workers. Per the governor's order, only one voter will be allowed in at a time. So we will be taking the precautionary measures. We will be taping the floors even when you come in here to this building. All of our poll workers will be wearing the personal protection equipment. So of course, right, the masks, gloves. I've asked for safety glasses. I've been working with Daniel Hill from Parks and Maintenance and they're creating some plexiglass screens to be placed in front of our ballot on demand systems. We have also been working to get thermometers. Right now, the plan is to have the poll workers take their temperature before they work the beginning of each day. Our other things we're looking at, and some of these might seem kind of crazy, but under the circumstances, I think we have to consider all of our options. Currently, our BOD system requires the voter to use an attached signature pin, kind of like when you go to, you know, the grocery store. Sometimes you have to sign if you use a credit card. We're considering using, I'm going to call them popsicle sticks, but virtually a wooden craft-type stick that could be disposed of after the voter uses it. We're also, the voter would be given a ballot pin to mark the ballot and then the voter would just not necessarily dispose of that, but put it into a bucket to where then that pin could be sanitized before it was given to the next voter. So if you guys have any suggestions or things that maybe we could implement in order to, again, keep staff, poll workers and voters safe during this process.
Or the popsicle sticks, don't make them flavor.
True, very good point, Commissioner. So with all of that said, that is the plan for early voting. For Election Day, I'm in the process of reducing our current voting convenience centers, which we have 33, down to eight. So I will bring, I have to petition the district judge.
For the general, what are you talking about now?
No, just for the primary election.
On voting day?
Yes, yes. So same, we have to plan right now as, we would love, right, we would all love for this to be lifted. But right now, the plan is to reduce those sites. Again, only have four workers at each of those sites. Once everything is lifted, then we could increase, still keep the limited sites because every voter that's eligible would have received an absentee application. And that's what we are strongly encouraging everybody, while you're at home, complete that application, send it to us and we'll mail you a ballot. So I can provide you with an update.
Did I fill the ballot out online? Do I have to still print it and send it in? I'm sorry, the application.
Chairman Fortner, the application can be completed online. It has been, that has been available. But as a convenience, every voter that's registered Democrat, Republican or Libertarian will be receiving an application mailed to them.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I might just add, as Ms. Shelby commented, that May 5th, early voting will start here. And so assuming the governor today, the public health order is supposed to expire May 1st, if that is extended, we would then in turn have to change, you know, our procedures today. All of our county buildings are closed to public access and their services are available by appointment only. If that were to happen, we would have to open up this building to allow voters to come vote here. Of course, we would, as mentioned, we would make sure all the appropriate social distancing is in place. Tape would be marked off on the floors, but we in turn would have to modify our building as it exists today. Just want to make you aware of that. We also have plenty of PPE available to accommodate all of the primary election needs the clerk's office has from employees, poll workers and voters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She didn't.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Mr. Crowley and commissioners by telephone. See you. Going to see everybody else again, going to keep my hands in my pockets, like my mom told me at the department store when I was a kid, so I don't break anything. So I'm not going to spread any germs. Mr. Stark asked that I give you an update on what's going on in Public Works. As I believe you're aware, the governor's order did identify Public Works maintenance construction as an essential service. And as such, our team is really out there kicking rear, doing a great job. So the Kennedy Road 5500 Bridge, as an update, we made formal offers to the seven impacted landowners on that bridge last week. Those went out via certified mail. You understand that the postal service is not accepting signature for certified mail right now. The DOT has suggested that they would waive that requirement within the right-of-way handbook.
We hear you. Well, Commissioner Beckstead couldn't hear. I think he was counting on the audio from the mic.
Really quick.
Well, I don't know.
I'll start back in with the last update and maybe Commissioner Beckstead or Totacini could cue me if I need to go back. On May 1st is the final drop dead date for us to have phased out single-stream recycling at our transfer stations where we'll only be accepting old corrugated cardboard products. We've already begun that phasing just because there's facility changes we have to make in terms of welding cans, et cetera, et cetera. That began this week and May 1 being the end of next. That program will be in place. I know Devin has been advertising that on social media and filing appropriate press releases. So with that, I'd stand for any questions?
Five Mile Bridge.
Five Mile Bridge, last update. So as you will recall, we've had a number of discussions about Five Mile Bridge. Obviously, an aging piece of infrastructure. Big piece of concern from your teaser views has been the Westerly Abutment. Our construction team has actively excavated that abutment. We build a steel crib that will house a lot of rock. It's tied into the slope. It was what we hope to be a low-cost, high-benefit project that will hopefully extend the life of that 110-year-old bridge as long as we can. Or 90-year-old.
90-year-old.
90-year-old bridge as long as we can. It lasts 20 years. So with that, I would stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to ask, has the announcement been put on the radio station? I know that concerning that it's going, no more recycling, it's just going to be cardboard.
Commissioner Totacini, this is Devin Neely. It is our understanding that our friends at Waste Management are handling the vast majority of that public outreach via media. I don't know specifically where that information has been sent, but I know it's only been on the streets since this morning via local social media channels. I understand it'll be shipped over to the newspapers, including Navajo Times and Farmington Daily Times, Drango Herald, as well as the local KOB affiliate. So as far as being specifically taken to KNDN, KTNN or any other stations, I'm not aware of that, but we can request that of our friends over at...
Yeah, Devin, please do because, you know, there's people my age, we're regular radio listeners and that's where a lot of the information we receive, you know, comes on KTNN for this area.
Yeah, understood. I'll make sure that Waste Management reaches out to those appropriate entities.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, any other reports from elected officials and department heads?
There being none, comments, input from the general public, limited to three minutes per person on subjects, subjects the commission has not previously discussed or formal action has not been taken. Or formal action would be taken in your discussion at this meeting, which relates to comments or input from the general public. If you'd like to address the commission, either notify Mr. Neely or step forward.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anybody that has signified that they'd like to make comment, but we do have a written comment that has been brought in. Do you have a copy of that, Chairman?
Written comments from the public. It's from Deborah Kaywood at dskwood@yahoo.com. Commissioners, I have two questions. First, the status of the bridge on Road 5500. Second, we believe during these tough times, it's proper to change the charge fines and late fees on late property taxes. Okay, so on fines and late fees and property taxes, the commission, we don't...
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, yes. As Mrs. Talby mentioned at the last meeting, that jurisdiction does not lie with us. The commission, the treasurer's office, that lies with the state. And they have chosen at this point not to waive any fines or penalties associated with late property taxes. So unfortunately, like I said, that's a state matter. But they have chosen not to take action on.
And then do you want to give a comment on the status of the bridge on Road 5500?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, yes. I think Mr. Perrell's report just summarized the status of that bridge and where we're at with construction. It's more so planning and design. And the hope is by June 1st, we'll be able to put this project out to bid and to ultimately have the project constructed by, and we hope to be, the end of the year would be ideal. So yes, I think that hopefully she caught Mr. Perrell's previous update. All right. All right, I think all public comment may have motion to adjourn from Ms. Crowley. Second by Commissioner Totacini. Discussion, those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
It appears it is of unanimous vote. We are hereby adjourned. Beckstead out.
Beckstead out.